I'd like to call this the emergency meeting on August 1st order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Mazariya.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance, please. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a recognition of visitors, and most of the faces around our table is pretty familiar any longer, but we do have an addition of our mayor and would like to welcome you to this meeting, sir.
It's good to be here, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for attending. First hearing of the public, please.
Hello, Barbie Washington Riverside Drive.
Please.
Oh.
I'm just trying to let there be light.
Oh, I get you. I have a question. I called the People Family Office, the Family Office, regarding the uniform policy. I asked if they were going to provide any uniform assistance. I know that it's been a policy of ours. It's actually the 2015-2016 Code of Conduct is still listed on our app, and it also states that they would provide two uniforms for anyone that was in need. And I was told that, Josh might need to answer this, I was told that there are no funds for uniform assistance this year. And I was also aware that we hired two new positions people in HR. Is that correct?
So let's get the first question answered first. Assistance for uniforms?
So last year, typically, we get some donations that take care of that assistance. Last year, I believe it was the Cleveland Browns that gave us a sizable donation for uniforms. Now, if they didn't secure donations for this year, then, yeah, we wouldn't have any money set aside for that.
Are you aware that it is in the, it's been a part of our policy for years? Thankfully, we've never had to use it, but the year that we thought we might have when my husband first got sick, I want to say is 2009. So I know as far back as then, it was something we offered.
I wouldn't be shocked if we still had, there's still some time, we might be able to secure some donations to be able to fund that. We always have. And I'm not sure typically of the timing. I think we, it was about this time last year that we got the Cleveland Browns donation to do it. So I'm not saying there won't be, I'm just saying typically, it's not budgeted. Normally, it's funded through donations.
Okay. Oh, I do want to add, there is a grant for students that might be homeless and that are in need, just so that's out there. Do we have two new positions in HR?
We do. We have two new coordinator positions that started in the People Office, which is essentially HR.
So we have a chief making six figures and a nice staff, and we have funds for two new positions, but we don't have funds to help our children.
I can speak to the funding of the uniforms. That is, like I said, that's usually done through donations. That's why it's not typically budgeted because of the fact that donations are secured. As for the hires, that is not within my control office. I can't speak to that necessarily. I can't paint the need for you, I guess, is what I'm saying.
But there is, so the, is there, would that be something separate? Something for staff, more staff? How many administrators do we have?
I don't have the exact number with me right now, but typically, each office will determine what their need is within staffing. And then, obviously, it's the CEO's discretion whether or not to approve it, and then it gets to me at the end of it, then, to make sure I have funds available for whatever that addition is.
Speaking of CEO approving agendas, I've noticed that he typically sends out two agendas a month, and there's been nothing for July.
What was the approval date in July?
22nd.
We have one in July, and one we haven't. So July is, is done.
Okay. So we only did one approval in July, and that's typically, I think, we have two. So that's why, and it was towards the end of the month in July. So that's why you're not seeing that second one posted yet, because they're still working through all the contracts before they put it all out there, I believe.
Okay.
Just based on where it's crossed through my office.
Okay. There's been nothing posted since June 25th online?
Which probably would have been the last one? Yeah, because there wasn't a first one in July.
Okay.
So July 22nd, and that one is still pending, but it will be posted when everything's ready to go within it, I think.
Okay.
I know it's already crossed through my office, so I know it's been approved, I believe, all the way through. I'm not really sure what's holding it up on the, you know, to get it actually posted. Office verification of the minutes, is what I'm being told.
Okay.
It's within the CEO's office as we speak.
Okay. Follow-up for the HR, the People Office. This is the Yonkers, Mrs. Yonkers, who was out several months, who works from home, all of those. Am I getting the right person?
It is Ms. Yonkers, who is the chief of People Office. That's correct.
Just wondering if she had, if she was required to work at school, maybe we wouldn't need two additional people to help her do her job.
Hello, my name is Vicki Bruski, and I'm an intervention specialist tutor. I work with a lot of the Lorraine City School students. I've been working all summer with them volunteering. I live in Amherst. I also have students from all other districts. I'm very concerned, extremely concerned. I have, first of all, I have 18 years as a special education advocate. I have a child with autism, high functioning autism. I've been in intervention specials for seven years, having gone back to school to become a better advocate, while I drove my son to a special school in Cleveland for four years from the Amherst School District. I've worked with several school districts over the summer, looking at the IEPs and working with these students. It breaks my heart. It's an atrocity. I have seen IEPs that have identification numbers of students that do not match the report cards. I have seen report cards from one semester to the next with unmatching identification numbers. I have seen report cards from one semester where students were receiving twos and threes under this new standards-based grading, where at the end of the year, they received a one and said, "The student has no skills." How could a student have no skills after receiving twos and threes all year long and then the last grading period receive a one? I have had, every age, I've worked with students from kindergarten through eighth grade. I have parents that have called endlessly all summer with no return calls. Last night, I worked with a little girl. Her mother finally got a call back. She wanted to make an amendment to an IEP. The student came from a neighboring district due to a move. She had goals in each area, reading, writing, math, and executive functioning skills, organization and staying on task. She had 100 minutes in each goal. This IEP was copied exactly from the previous school district, except each, the minutes were taken down to 20 minutes each compared to what she had. The child has had a waste of a year. She is so far behind. I have parents calling me each and every day, asking me, "Where can I send my students?" As an advocate for children all over the state of Ohio, a lot of them don't know about the autism scholarship, the John Peterson Scholarship, which covers many disabilities, and even our residents of Lorraine, some of them are not aware of the vouchers. With my heart, being a resident of not Lorraine, but Amherst, and it breaks my heart to give them these options of where to go, I want Lorraine to thrive. I even thought of purchasing real estate so I could run for the board. It is borderline child abuse. A couple of the parents, that they read in the paper, that there was a new curriculum bought for the education, for the elementary children. They asked me what it meant when it said, I believe in one of the articles of the paper, I haven't been up on reading the articles, "It's not aligned to the standards." Well, these children are already falling so far behind. They're down. So now, curriculum, which they've had no curriculum, curriculum is purchased that is not aligned to the standards. It's borderline child abuse, if it's not child abuse. I've talked to Columbus. It was in question.
We normally have about a two minutes for each person, so we're going to have to ask you to start wrapping up if you want.
I'll wrap it up. I was, question about the person taking over for the director. I know her personally. She couldn't get anyone better, but her husband is Jeff Hawke's right-hand man. I talked to somebody last night from Columbus. No specific language has been released yet, and Senator Lehner reported to the press that possibly, maybe hearings may be heard in the fall. If this waits that long and something's not done, it'll be a catastrophe. Also, I have a question for Mr. Josh. Two questions, real quick. I have heard that the new director of Special Ed, who I have, she's phenomenal, does not have anything to do with the hiring, that two supervisors are hiring. I'd like to know, do they have administrative licenses?
For the two supervisors?
That are doing the hiring for Special Ed. It is such a crucial department. I'd like to know if they have licenses as administrators in special education.
That I do not know, because I don't know who's doing the hiring.
Yeah, but I was told that, you know, to ask that.
I can look into it for you.
Okay, and one other question for you, and I don't know this at all, and it might be a silly question. I know that Mr. Hardy recently hired a financial director. When you have a financial director at a six-figure salary, do you still have to have a treasurer? And what is the difference? What would the financial director be responsible for that you would, you know?
So the finance director, there's, I have two assistant treasurers, essentially. The term "finance director" is basically one of those.
Oh, I see.
I have a, my assistant treasurer is essentially retiring at the end of this year.
Okay.
It's Karen Blazek. She is retiring December 31st, and so we hired somebody knowing that she's probably going to vacation out, maybe about a month, month and a half. And so we wanted to have enough overlap to make sure that's a seamless transition.
Okay, well, so the financial director is an assistant treasurer?
Assistant treasurer, correct.
Okay, well, and one last word. We, everybody hates to see you go, so do what Jesus would do for the kids.
Good afternoon. My name is Donald Warfield. I'm a retired materials manager and superintendent from Florida Brook Park. I'm an Air Force veteran. I went to Lorraine City Schools from third grade to 12th grade. And right on this site, there was Admiral King. We had teachers that taught us and was willing to make us learn. And assistant principal, Mr. Ackerman, he was like a sheriff. He watched everything that we did. But my point is, the reason my being is here, I have a lot of stuff about the Board of Education, and Mr. Hardy don't get along. Anytime you develop a team, a lot of times, the new CEO comes in, a major organization, he wants to change everything. That costs you money. But he never asks the lower management or the people running the show, the profit center, how, "We're going to make these changes, and we don't have no money." And the thing is, you have to marry ideas. You know, he has to have an individual interview with all of you and vice versa, then you have a group interview, so then you know what you got to work with. For example, you got a lot of kids in Lorraine that don't want to learn. It's not the teacher's fault, so why you going to beat the teachers up? I taught school for one day in 2004, never went back in the classroom. I have a bachelor's from Louisiana Tech, and I have a master's from Ball and Wallace. So I benefited from Lorraine City Schools, and every path I took, from the Air Force to Ford Motor Company, every time there was an opportunity to learn, to advance, I took it. I worked 25 years, seven days a week, 11 and a half hours, to put my kids through college. Paid them, you know, no student loans, paid them. But what I'm saying is, when you have kids that don't want to learn, you got to figure a way to tap that cognitive domain and make them learn. You know, they come here, they read cell phones, they dress all cliche, you know, and think that this is a game. It's not a game. If they don't get an education, especially minority kids of color, they're going to be washing dishes, mopping floors, and you can go down to Tower City at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning and watch the people do the same thing. You can watch the Mexicans or the illegal immigrants come in on buses and clean that hotel up, and come in at 11:00 at night and go back out at 7:00. But the ones that don't have no education, there's no future for them. So this is a brand-new building. We're building stuff downtown to make this city more private, more great again, I have to use Trump's words, "Make Lorraine great again." It was great when we was coming to school. Only thing you had to do, bring your jockstrap, and everything was provided for you, you know? And if you didn't work, you got kicked in the butt. And if you didn't do what the teachers told you, they called your parents. I'll give you an example. One day, I came to school, some peach fuzz on my face. Mr. Ackerman said, "Warfield, go home." Time I got home, my mother collared me, you know, gave me the riot act. And she told me this. She said, "What do you see in the mirror?" I said, "Oh, shucks, here it comes." I said, "Young black man, I see Donald Warfield." She said, "That ain't going to never change." And she said, "One day, you can go through the front door to get what you want, and one day, you can go through the back door, and one day, you may have to go through the basement window or the attic one, but you're going to be black the rest of your life." And she said, "Don't ever use the color of your skin as an excuse for failure. If you do, I'll bring you, and don't bring me no dishonor." And she told me, she said, "Your dad was a chef back when black men were peeling potatoes and washing dishes," you know, and said, "You got that throwbar DNA. It's like Kentucky throwbears. My daddy's from Kentucky, and you got that DNA."
Mr. Warfield, you have a question for us, sir?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
My question is, you got to touch these kids' cognitive domain. If they don't want to learn, you got to set them aside, and you got to ask them, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" The other question is, when you have assemblies, you should bring somebody in here that's ordinary, somebody from the community who's a doctor, not just Johnny Wilson, who's a general. Because my brother was a corporate vice president for Curman Gill Oil Company, and he went to Lorraine City Schools. He was a vice president of senior class with Johnny Wilson. But there's other people have risen from Lorraine that you don't even know about. These kids don't know who W.D. DeBois is or Martin Luther King. They can't even tell you what Alvin Clayton Powell did, you know, before Martin Luther King. So you need to change your curriculum, and you need to marry your thoughts with the CEO, and you need to get his behind up here with you every, that's why you ain't going to get none done. He's just like Trump. He's going to stonewall you all the time. But you got to figure a way to get him up here to these meetings to understand your agenda. See, if you send a text message to him, that's impersonal. You got to look him in the eye and talk to him, man-to-man, nose-to-nose, face-to-face. This is what I want, and he'll give you more respect.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
You know, but that's what you have to do with this guy.
Okay.
But I'm just, I'm just an old guy that's retired, but I feel hurt for these teachers who are getting beat up. Anytime you go to college for four years, five years, six years, to learn something, to be a teacher, it's hard. I went to Ball and Wallace to get, work on a master's of education, because you know why? Managers know how to manage, but managers don't know how to teach how to manage.
Okay, sir. I'm going to say, thank you.
I'll close with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
I just wanted to welcome and congratulate Courtney Mazariya.
All right, yes.
I should have said that first.
Thank you. Anything else from the public?
Hello, Mary Miller from East 34th Street. Just a couple of questions. I know it was brought up last week's meeting, I believe, the numbers of maybe teachers we were down, resignations and so forth, didn't quite match up. As far as the numbers provided by Mr. Hardy to, I believe it was Mrs. Patty O'Brien who was here, and I don't know if anybody ever got any clarification as to that. I know she came up with like the 596 number, and that didn't quite match up with what was in the union. Anything further from anybody?
I did, when we were, I think the number 400 was thrown out. I mean, we lost the high school alone, and I, at that point during the meeting, I ended up getting the number was, we were down 51 students at the high school. As for teachers...
471, that's the thing, last number I heard.
471. I know it's not that many, but again, that number changes from day to day, and I do know when I requested the number of open positions, I believe, based on the number of applicants in the pool and the open positions, I think we only had six openings. So, but as for how many people left, I did not have that number.
Okay, I just was curious as to, were the numbers provided accurate or not, and if there was ever any further clarification on that? At Monday's ADC meeting, it was brought up about the scholarship program and how the kids weren't swiping in, and I know it was an ongoing issue as to the last one. I know it's probably caused some issues with kids as far as being able to even return to the district. Any chance that, anybody got a chance to maybe look at the publication or whatever was posted by the district yesterday, basically saying if the scholarship don't work, it's because your scholar's not working it correctly? I mean, that's what I took from that, like...
Is that the swiper that you're referring to?
Yes. Yeah, and basically, like, they had put, like, this was an issue prior to House Bill 70, which I don't see why that would even, yeah, at this point, I mean, we just want accurate numbers, and it had, you know, if it was a known issue, why wasn't it being worked on? And it just seemed to dismiss the concerns that the parents had, as well as I know some teachers had came up and said, like, their machines weren't working, or, I don't know, it just wasn't kind of too happy with the response in that.
I didn't get any follow-up on that.
Right, okay. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
There was a comment that I read, and it said that if you checked in once, you were checked in, if you checked in twice, you were checked out. And I think maybe clarifying how you check in and out of school might do everybody, you know, a good deed. To answer your question, before I checked with the union, they said we had 470-some teachers in the district. I don't know, can't tell you how many up or down we are at the high school. I heard a number, but I really don't want to throw it out there because it, you know, could be an erroneous, erroneous number. But the scholarship thing, I asked, and I was told that they're all working now, that they got all the little pods working, that they are working. I think maybe it could be more of how you use it. Okay, I actually thought it was a pretty neat way when they first opened this school in 2016. I thought it was a neat way to check attendance. I thought it was very, very modern, you know? But I never thought it would come back to haunt us, and it could, I mean, in a lot of ways. You know, not only, I mean, that is used for teachers, to see if they're present, you know, but teachers and students, and I don't know if they use that for administrators or not, but I think they just use the, probably a different system, the one that's on the door for your passes to check you in and out. But anyway, that's my comment.
Any additional from...
Summer Harvey, Skyline Drive, Lorraine. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought that when the student swiped in, and this was even corroborated with what the district released as their explanation to the situation, it placed them somewhere, because this is a per-class thing. So it places them in the building when they come in, and then it places them in that class when they swipe. So I don't think there is a thing of swiping out. They don't swipe out when they leave the class, right? Okay, so they're not exiting, there's no exit swipe. So I don't think there's a way for them to swipe in and then accidentally swipe again, and that cancel their, that's not. So if the student didn't swipe in at all, or put their student number in at all, that's an issue, but as well, there's been lots of students who said themselves, "So it's my fault. The kiosk is broken." Like, so what do you say to that, you know? I mean, these kids are getting blamed for an entire program's failure, or maybe failure, and we don't even have, I mean, how many teachers and, there's not many administrators, but like, nobody has the answer, and that's crazy. We don't have anything to tell these kids, like, "Okay, if you do this X, Y, Z, it will for sure work," because that's not even true. So to all the students who are swiping incorrectly, I want to apologize to you, if you're watching, because it is a shame that they're blaming you for broken kiosks, mishaps in their programming or transferred data. It's ridiculous, and they're just pushing the ball onto someone else, per usual. But I don't think there's a swiping out aspect.
Well, I did read that, that it did cancel it, but I just remember the day when you used to have like a first-period homeroom where they, that's where you seemed to check in at, and maybe they should go back to just writing your name down, making sure you was there, because I know that, I know that there were calls made for even my granddaughter, that several times, my daughter got called, and she would call me in frustration, like I was going to do something about it, and I says, "Well, I don't get involved in day-to-day operations, but I'll ask somebody." But I know, I know she was in school for a fact, because I have a wife that works there, and I, you know, I call her up and say, "Can you visually see her hair?" And she says, "Yes." So I know for a fact that it doesn't, it didn't always work.
Same. I have a high schooler, and I would get alerts in the middle of the day, like third period or something, and it's like, "What do you mean, she's not in class?" I either check her location or even give her a call or a text, she's in class, so it's like, I mean, this isn't a one-parent, two-parent, three-parent thing, like, this is literally...
Yeah, you're not alone.
No. Thank you.
So we need a motion, a approval of minutes from our last meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from our last regular board meeting.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Mazariya?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
So I need a motion to suspend the rules so we can go into the issue of the emergency meeting being the levy and employment. So...
Support.
Any discussion on that? Break off.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Mazzaria?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
So in suspending the rules, we're going to just kind of have a general conversation because the levy issue has been a big topic in our community now for at least the last year. And as you guys know, I've taken some pretty solid stance on my opinion on the levy, how we were doing the levy and the things that it would take for me to get excited and really, really push a levy here in the district. Well, a couple of those things have come and we are now down to our last final days on if this community could vote on a levy. So I wanted to have a final, open conversation with the board in a public space so we can find out where the pleasure is of the board. So I just kind of wanted to open up a discussion with you guys, first of all, and talk about where we are with this levy issue.
I'll speak first and this is tough for me because I've, I always think that you never, you never turn down a levy and a renewal should be, should be a no-brainer. But we have said that as long as Mr. Hardy was in place, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a levy because there was no accountability. And I'm kind of torn between what I want to do and what I think I know what is right. So if we do decide this today, I will, I will agree to run a levy. Only because, you know, there's gonna be life past Mr. Hardy. Okay? And I, I think, once that's, once that happens, I hope we're, I hope we're a lot better at letting people know where we use their money and what we do with it and, you know, that we do better, that we do better for children and that, you know, I think a lot of us have learned a lot about curriculum and learned about things that maybe we should've been watching five years ago, six years ago. And I'll bet I'm setting a cross for one right now. But I, I will say this though, and we've had certain assurances from, you know, from the state and from different commissions and this and that, that we think we have an idea when all this exit strategy is gonna occur. But if it comes in November and Mr. Hardy's still here, that I will probably vote no on that levy and I would probably encourage my friends to do the same because I don't think that the money that we've had, I don't, I just don't think he's been a good steward of it. So that's my take on it.
And I'll interrupt, I'll interrupt right here and say, I did have a conversation with the mayor on yesterday and I asked that he'd be here because the schools and the city all have to work hand in hand to accomplish what it is we're trying to accomplish as a whole community. So I don't know if you had any remarks that you'd like to make, but I would like to make sure that your opinions are voiced.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. I am without a question a supporter of the school system and I'm certainly always been a supporter. I have never voted against a school levy in my life, ever. I mean, that's how important it is. I got my Save the Children's tie on, which I wear on occasions when it's issues that are near and dear to me. But I do believe, as Mr. Sturgill has stated, the situation, you can't let August 7th go by and not, not put the levy on the ballot. But I do believe seriously, I spent 21 years in Ohio Legislature and I have never seen a worse piece of legislation, a more underhanded move by any, anybody in my tenure there. I had just, it just flabbergasted that that became law. And that was done with purpose. It was done to turn, without a doubt, they wanted to turn this school system into charter school system. There's no question in my mind. And I don't believe that's far-fetched the truth going forward with some of the motives in the state legislature and others, believe me. But I would also, as I, if Mr. Hardy is still here, when that date of the election comes around, it might be questionable whether I'm gonna run up and down the streets with Lynn Bales and Dixie to support it either. Because I really believe strongly that Columbus is, has to make a move. The only reason they didn't go forward because they saw with 14 more school systems and more to come, that it's an unaffordable thing to do. And I really hope that the Supreme Court, and I believe that's an out for him, rules it's unconstitutional and I would not be surprised to see that happen. But I pretty much agree, Mr. Sturgill, would support with a caveat to be careful going forward.
From the time I got on this board, I have said that I was for the levy. And as I watched the community become poisoned and have a negative effect on the levy, it reflected on the students to me. It never reflected on anything else. And so I stayed focused because I kept saying, "It's about the students. It is not about politics." And so you had to let that go and that was the only focus I had. And so it bothered me that I could see the community becoming very negative about the levy. That didn't cost them a dime, that was going to help our students. And I realized that our CEO was not going to stay here continuously and perhaps that we could get a better hand on the way he handled finances, but it didn't matter because it was about the students. I wasn't pleased all the time the way the finances were handled, but it's still, it was never about him. It was about our students and that's why I stayed focused on the levy. Now here we are, and what are we doing? Putting emergency time in because we didn't do it before when we had plenty of time to convince the community what it was all about. Thank you.
Well, I will jump in here. First thing, I hear what my colleagues are saying. Some points I have some agreement, some points not. First, I don't want to say first because I have to say second, third, fourth and fifth. There is never a levy that does not cost a taxpayer anything. It might not cost them more, but it costs all of us something. So when we make a statement that it's not gonna cost you anything, that is absolutely untrue. Every levy that goes through for taxpayers, based on homeownership or whatever the case might be, we pay. So the renewal levy, it's true, it's not additional money, but it is our money that is being paid. And as a board member, part of our responsibility is not to determine the need because by default, there's always a need. Our responsibility has to do with the stewardship, how that money is spent and utilized. And if we cannot state with a certain level of certainty, based on our observation, based on our oversight, that these monies are being spent appropriately. Now, if any of our board members can say that they are being spent appropriately, then by all means, we should ask for more. But if I'm asked this, Mr. Williams, can you vouch for the stewardship being exercised by this administration? And I say, "No." Well, then how dare me ask them to keep spending their money on something that not only can I not say I can't vouch for, but believe is inappropriate? So I think there's more than just asking for, it's about kids. Yes, it's also about politics. I mean, House Bill 70 was politics. This is about adults, about how they spend their money and their expectations for how that money is spent. So to throw off on this all about kids and kids need money, well, that doesn't allow us to abuse the taxpayer by misspending their money. So from that perspective, I am all for, we said this, there were certain conditions by which we wanted, that we needed to have met. One of them was in person of Mr. Hardy, but the other piece was this whole piece around accountability. I can say this, I have no more knowledge or understanding of how our money has been spent since we made that statement until now. I will ask every board member, do you feel like you have a better understanding of how our money is being spent since we made our initial vote not to do it? And unless you have different information than I, the answer is still no. So it's not that our heart isn't about meeting the needs of our kids. Our heart is where it should be, but we aren't making these decisions with our heart. So we have to prove, don't trust, you verify. So it's clear that we have a lack of trust. We also can't, we have no means of verification. Here's where our discussions have been as of late, so the community understands. The levy card is the only card, one of the only cards that we have to play. We've played that card very responsibly and very efficiently. I think this, there's a deadline that is today, that is coming up on the 7th, I believe, or the 5th. But there's also another date. There's a date by which we can vote to put a levy on.
Yes.
And then there's a date in which we can have them remove it. And I would say this, the conditions haven't changed. We now have, based on our conversations with, I would say, from what I've heard from of five commissioners and the ODE, it has been expressed with clarity that Mr. Hardy is not going to be extended or renewed and that his exit would probably be better sooner than later. Now, people have said a lot of things off the record. So what I'm saying that I've heard off the record, I need to have people put that on the record. I need some form that indicates that this is not just talk. Why? Because there's no trust. I don't trust you, so I need something that clarifies, that obligates you to what you've expressed. And I think from what I understand, this is not a split decision or majority, this is a unified, 100% believe this. And I think that's what we've heard and that's what we expect. So Mr. Hardy's departure from this district would need to be clear. Now, I don't know what the date of that is. I mean, there's lots of stuff to be negotiated and talked about, but we need to have, I need that assurance that going forward, and why? Here's what we believe. Based on the collection of our levy, in no scenario of his contract or based on expeditiously him leaving this district, would he be here upon collection of this levy money. So what we can say is, based on what we've been told, that will not be a part of us not having accountability over stewardship. The other thing that we've, that we would have to have, again, and I'm not sure, does someone know what that date is that we need to call the Board of Elections? What is the date prior to the ballot being printed that we can have our...
Not sure of that date.
But there is a date.
There is a date.
There's a date. We also believe this, the legislature sits somewhere around July 17th, that in 30 days, they would have some, they gave the moratorium for other districts, there would be some kind of resolution regarding the three districts here in House Bill 70. We have expectations that that's going to restore some level of local control. And so again, if those things are true as they've expressed, then by all means, we should go forward with this levy. If they are not true, not only do we have a challenge with asking money for poor stewardship, we'd have a difficult trying to convince a community that that's a reasonable ask. I think we'd do our levy more jeopardy if we ask for this money without having that kind of confidence than not asking at all. Asking and failing based on a lack of confidence is a very large barrier to then overcome. So I, again, I think, Mr. Ballard, going forward on the levy, yes, I would support language that places on the ballot condition to these other things. So I would ask our legal counsel to draw up that resolution, if possible, that would have that language in there that gave us, so that we would not have to have an emergency meeting the day before the thing has to be pulled off.
Yes.
Listen, this is our value and we've stated it. If these things hold true, if what the ODE and the ADCS express to us, if they're true to it, then it goes. If they're not true, we're not gonna meet again on the date, that the last date that this has come up, if we don't have those things in writing that guarantee us that relief from this present CEO and that give us some indicator, we've asked this, we've asked that a board member be placed on the ADC. There are all kinds of ways that they can give us a guarantee that our values are represented and they're talking about it and they're thinking about it. Well, at a certain stage, you've had long enough time to think and talk, take some action. So we're going to preserve the lifeline of our levy. It is our levy, it's our future, but it is still conditional. Are we in agreement on that? That if things don't change, then we would be not good stewards to advance that cause? I mean, that's where I haven't, we've agreed, Yvonne, on certain things.
Yes.
We've also agreed that the accountability is not negotiable. And so again, moving forward, if those things can be put into the language of the resolution, then I'm supportive.
I guess I would say, to say that we all care about the students and understand that they all need the money, but Mr. Hardy clearly doesn't care the way he's spending the money. To hire the amount of administrators he's hired, we could use that money on the students, to not show us how the money's being spent. I'm cautious to trust everything that the state says. I think putting the levy on, of course, we need the money, the students need the money. But I agree with Tim, I completely would support the levy. And I would, I've always voted for a levy, but I would vote no if Mr. Hardy still was here in November.
Okay. So I have been one who, for the last three or four months, have been in constant conversation from Mike DeWine's office to the ODE, to the State School Board, to Nathan Manning, Gail Manning, all the people in the legislature. And of recent, I've been attending, I've attended the last ADC meeting and I've had constant conversation with a lot of the ADC members. And to go back on, to say what you said, Tim, I've had assurances from the top that the, though the moratorium went into place, they were going to get Lorraine the relief that Lorraine needs in a very short order. Now, it's not in writing anywhere, but I have to try to take people at their word as best I can. I've been assured by most of the ADC and have heard assurance from other members that they've purported to at the ADC, that they have no interest in renewing a contract and it's been stated that the sooner he's gone, the better. And we're negotiating now, trying to figure out ways to do buyouts and get contracts. I'm even having this conversation now because of those conversations and assurances and that's why I wanted to assemble you all, to say that it's not quite there yet, but we're racing against time. But I am confident with the conversation that I've had from Columbus back to here and the ADC, that they will keep their word and give us the relief that we need from this CEO sooner than later. So that is my comment. And I am gonna ask to comment of the ADC and see if either one of them have anything...
One more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with you, Tim. If we can get that in some legal writing and we can get that done and we know that it's not gonna be something that we have to go back to and that we don't have to have an emergency meeting to, and we're still going by faith on what's going to be done. I think that's excellent.
I would just add, I mean, obviously, everybody's kind of said a lot of what I would say and there have been the conversations of transitioning not only Lorraine but Youngstown and East Cleveland from the situations that they're in now back to local control. And that seems to be a common belief. And I think the problem that we're in Lorraine running into is that window doesn't match up with what the Senate looks to do. They have made assurances, Peggy Laner, you know, has said, "We are gonna come back, we're gonna not forget Lorraine." The governor's office has said that we've had those assurances, as President Ballard has alluded to. So I think we have to be careful, obviously, to not let the levy window close and let's say, two months from now, the Senate does their due diligence or the governor pushes the Senate to do their due diligence and the powers that be take care of the transition piece that we're all wanting to see happen. That's something that, obviously, that we need to see. And I am in agreement, I've been, I've gone on record and I've said my piece about Mr. Hardy. The sooner that we transition back to local control, I think the better it will be for the community because we've been polarized by House Bill 70 and what's happened here in Lorraine. So you have my assurance as a member of the Academic Distress Commission, Mr. Ballard, to support you guys and support that transition back to local control. I'll let Diane...
And I'm going to also say on the record that I've actually had recent correspondence with Mr. Hardy and I've let him know my stance and that there would not be support of any contract renewal, as well as it's in the best interest of the Lorraine City School students and community at large, that we sit down, talk about an immediate exit strategy and I'd be willing to help him and help the commission and the board work collectively to see that that happens. that happens.
Thank you. Now, to go back to your request of language in a resolution, we do have a resolution prepared tonight to get Mr. Josh Hill the ability to go forward and get things cleared at the county to get onto the ballot. It probably will take another resolution for us to then pull...
Let me ask this from a legal perspective.
Okay. That's fine.
We have a resolution and we've had a, and I think you can decipher the request to add to that resolution. Could we vote on a resolution with the changes as stated?
Through the President, to the Board, and to the public. Let me see if I can put some structure to the thoughts that have been expressed today. And in fact, there hasn't been a call yet for a motion to place the levy on the ballot, and I assume that'll come here in a few moments.
So if you can doctor that up now, then we can just ask for that.
Let me finish my thoughts and we can then ask whatever questions are appropriate. It would seem to me, and I'm going to say to you as your lawyer, that you're going to have to adopt two resolutions, so we can have it clean. And more than that, the second resolution won't necessarily ever become effective, depending upon the circumstances that you dictate, to be the ones that would lead to removing the levy from the ballot. So I think the first step, the first appropriate step, if the Board feels this way, and we haven't had that vote taken yet, is to pass a resolution putting the renewal levy on the ballot. I think we should keep it clean, have a resolution that does that. I think you can direct us by motion to adopt, or to prepare, rather, a resolution that would effectively remove the levy from the ballot if certain circumstances don't come about or certain conditions aren't met. And we haven't, I don't think Mr. Williams necessarily been clear enough about what those actuating events would be. And I think we need to have a bit more discussion and debate on the second resolution that I'm suggesting, so we're not unclear as your lawyers as to what those very specific circumstances are that must occur before this Board would meet again and adopt that resolution that we would prepare for you to consider. So, I think to say it simply, one, let's decide whether you're going to put the renewal levy on the ballot, adopt a resolution to that effect if you're so inclined. Two, a motion directing us to prepare a resolution for consideration at a future board meeting that contains very specific terms and conditions as to what it would take to cause this Board to consider removing the levy from the ballot. Now, having said that, we are fortunate to have Mr. Giardini here in that he has two hats. One, he is your co-counsel, along with me and Ms. Santiago, to the Board. He also sits on the Board of Elections and maybe he can shed some light on that second event, how and when it might come about that you could remove this renewal levy from the ballot. But let me say, as far as I am concerned, and I'm advising you today, that a separate resolution, separate apart from the resolution placing the matter on the ballot, the renewal levy on the ballot, should be considered by the Board and those terms and conditions need to be very specific and clear.
Thank you.
Yeah. To the President, Mr. Williams, I agree with Mr. Riley. In fact, I would probably go a step further and say that if you want to, if you pass a resolution putting it on the ballot and you certify that to the Board, I think the only way the Board would be comfortable taking it off the ballot is if we had a very specific resolution saying, "Take it off the ballot." And I'll tell you why. No matter how well we as lawyers draft a resolution saying this condition has to be met and that condition has to be met, someone could interpret it differently. More importantly, somebody would have to certify to the Board that the conditions, whatever they were, weren't met. I can tell you right now, as a Board member, I'd have a hard time voting to take it off the ballot if I wasn't 1,000% satisfied that those conditions hadn't been met or that the conditions for taking it off had been met. In short, what I would argue is, much safer to put it on the ballot and then if you change your mind a week or two weeks or... And I will tell you, somewhere around mid-September is where you're going to have to make up your mind. Early voting now starts first week of October. We're going to print ballots before then. And so we're going to be printing ballots before then and certainly no later than the time early voting starts, this would have to be removed. So I would not, I don't, I just think you're creating a real legal mess if the Board doesn't come back, meet another special meeting and specifically say, "Take this off the ballot." It's the equivalent of a candidate withdrawing from, which candidates do from time to time, withdrawing from the ballot, which they're allowed to do, but there is a point of no return.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I think the, you know, and I can bite in that dynamic, what was very important is that the intentions were clearly expressed. So in this public meeting, I think to our public and to one another, we've been very clear that we are leaving, we are putting this on, but it is conditional.
Yes.
And our desire is to do the best for our district, not to cripple us financially, but in terms of our stewardship, not to compromise the integrity of that. So as long as that's clear in terms of our intentions, I don't want folks coming back saying, "Well, no, they pulled a quick one." No, this, it's clear before we do the first move that this is conditional. So, and thank you that legally, yes, we're best to be clean and have no room for anyone to challenge our actions, even for us to challenge our own actions. So I'm content with that. Thank you.
And I would just go on record and say this, by no means mean that we have got, we've gained any more support or belief in the abilities of David Hardy. This levy has nothing to do with him, absolutely have zero confidence there. So I want you all to be clear on that. But I guess we need to move on to the next portion of our business, would be recommendations of the Treasurer.
So with that being said, I would make the recommendation to consider the approval of the second resolution, Resolution Number Two, giving me the authority to place the levy on the ballot for renewal.
Do you need to read the resolution?
I can.
Please, the caption.
Yeah. Okay. Resolution determining to proceed with submission to the electors of the school district of the question of the renewal of an existing tax levy pursuant to Sections 5705.194 to 5705.197 of the Ohio Revised Code. Whereas at an election on November 6, 2012, the electors of the school district approved an additional tax levy in excess of $10 million, the $10 million limitation, in order to raise the amount of $3,126,190 each calendar year for a period of seven years for the purpose of providing for the emergency requirements of the school district, the last collections of which will occur on calendar year 2019. And whereas on May 28, 2019, this Board adopted Resolution Number 19R63 declaring it necessary to submit to the electors of the school district the question of renewing that tax levy in excess of the $10 million limitation, as described below, a copy of which resolution was certified to Lorraine County Auditor. And on June 12, whereas on June 12, 2019, the Lorraine County, and actually that should be today's date, so that would be a correction. So I think we flipped one part of it, but not the other one. So whereas on August 1, 2019, the Lorraine County Auditor will certify that the total current tax valuation of the school district, oh, no, I do apologize, that is correct, that is their certification of the valuation. I thought that was for this piece. We do have it correct up top here for August 1. Whereas on June 12, 2019, the Lorraine County Auditor certified that the total current tax valuation of the school district is $607,143,340 and the estimated annual tax levy required throughout the life of the proposed levy to produce the annual amount of $3,126,190, as set forth in that resolution, calculated in the manner provided by Section 5705.195 of the Revised Code, is 5.15 mils for each $1 evaluation, which amounts to 51.5 cents for each $100 evaluation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lorraine City School District, Lorraine County of Lorraine, Ohio. Determination to proceed, this Board hereby determines to proceed with the submission of the electors at an election to be held on November 5, 2019, of the question of renewing an existing tax levy in excess of the $10 million limitation for a period of seven years, commencing with a levy on the tax list and duplicate for tax year 2019 for first collection in calendar year 2020, in order to raise the amount of $3,126,190 each year for the purpose of providing for the emergency requirements of the school district at the annual tax rate as is necessary to raise that amount, which rate is currently estimated by the Lorraine County Auditor to be 5.15 mils for each $1 evaluation, which amounts to 51.5 cents for each $100 evaluation. Certification and delivery of materials to the Board of Elections, the Treasurer is directed to deliver or cause to be delivered a certified copy of Resolution 19R63 referred to in the second preamble of this resolution, the certificate of the Lorraine County Auditor referred in the third preamble of this resolution, and a certified copy of this resolution to Lorraine County Board of Elections before the close of business on Wednesday, August 7, 2019. This Board hereby requests that the Board of Elections give notice, prepare the ballots, and make other necessary arrangements for the submission of this question to the electors of the school district, all in accordance with the law.
Need a motion on the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Oh, please.
I still move.
Support.
Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Nazaria?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Got anything further for you?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to finish up our discussion on this subject, I've had a chance to talk to Mr. Giardini, who's had a chance to check with the Board about the date on which we could remove the levy from the ballot. I'd like him to give the Board some information.
So it's a little different for issues than it is for candidates. There's not a specific date. So I would say it would be the start of early voting, which would be around October 5. The only difference is if we start printing ballots and it has it on and you change your mind, you'll have to reimburse us for printing new ballots.
Is it possible that you could notify us of, once you find out when you're going to print, that way we give ourselves an appropriate window, so that when we make our motion, that we would have those dates in there?
Right. So it's going to be around mid-September, I can tell you that pretty certainly. Tim, if you wanted to avoid the cost of printing new ballots.
So then if it's through the Chair, I would make a motion.
And I had the Director clarify that with Secretary of State's office.
Okay. Thank you. So if it be reasonable, I would like to make a motion that we direct our legal counsel to prepare that resolution based on some conversations and whatever else needs to happen, but start that process so we can get the right information. Is that a public discussion that we have? Is that something that we, how would you suggest that we go about creating those conditions so that they could be placed into language?
Through the Chair, I think that Tony has given some clear statement as to what the Board of Elections would like to see. So I think that our analysis of this sort of goes backwards from that point. And I think what he is suggesting is that when the Board receives your decision on whether you're going to go forward, it be as clean a statement as possible. And that's something that's necessarily tied to an express set of conditions. That might be interpreted by one person one way and by another person another way. Now, if you wish to set some conditions today that wouldn't otherwise not be expressed in the resolution itself, so that when you revisit this some number of days from now, prior to the point in time when the publishing might occur, the printing of the ballots, then that certainly is something you might consider.
Maybe could we, at our next meeting, just have a work session and then we can discuss that?
Yes, that would be, that's a good suggestion.
Yes.
But I think the resolution itself, I think we should follow the direction of a member of the Board of Elections and make it a clean statement as to whether you wish the issue to remain on the ballot or not remain on the ballot. Those debates and those questions you want to have answered before you decide to adopt or not adopt that resolution, I think is something you would have in a work session, an open discussion with the public. And you can decide on that day whether you wish us to ask the Treasurer to certify it over, removing it from the ballot.
Thank you.
From that, I'd like to move on to our next point of business. So I've been working with the Treasurer, who had alerted me that I may be getting a call from someone who was verifying his employment and with some other questions. And that's how I first learned that we may have a desire of a Treasurer to depart from our district. So when they did call, we, you know, we've just told them how great of a job we think he's done up to this point. And they eventually made him an offer. And so I opened up the computer and I see an offer on the, actually a correspondence that they've hired a new Treasurer. And with that, I called them immediately and said, "Well, first of all, we've not gotten a resignation. We knew he was searching. We never received a resignation." And if that were the case, I'm not exactly sure how the Board would proceed into that. So which led us into a whole nother conversation with the Treasurer at that time on what his future would look like. And I'm sure some of you may have read the statements in the newspaper. So our Treasurer's been offered a job in Lynnhurst, South Euclid. Correct? South Euclid.
Correct.
And at this point, I'm not sure if the district has received a resignation or if, I know I haven't received one yet, but I wanted to kind of further discussion because in my opinion, we had a contract on that particular date that was still in place. And I shared that information with the leadership out there. And it says, "Until I can have a conversation with my Board on how we proceed," that started this conversation. But in the meantime, there's been some other things that have happened. So I questioned our legal people on what are our rights in House Bill 70 on how this whole Treasurer piece works with the duly-elected Board versus the CEO. So they've done some research and I believe they're able to kind of give us a readout on what has happened at this point.
This is, of course, because of legislation, House Bill 70 was passed in such haste, either legislature missed some things or if we're going to give them the benefit of doubt, they thought them through and they made conscious decisions not to include certain things in House Bill 70. The Treasurer is a statutory position. It's like a superintendent. It is, in our view, the Treasurer is not an administrator. The Treasurer is a statutory, statutorily created position and with good reason. A Treasurer serves as a check and balance against a superintendent. Treasurer looks at the money being spent that the superintendent has authorized to spend. And the Treasurer holds a second responsibility, which is why he's here today, as he's Secretary to the Board of Education. So it's our view that the Treasurer really works for the Board of Education, not for the superintendent or even for a CEO, because nothing in House Bill 70 deals with the statutory provisions that govern responsibilities of a Treasurer. But that's not the end of the discussion, because the Treasurer's contract with you expired yesterday, July 31. However, the Treasurer apparently, in conjunction with the CEO, negotiated an extension to his contract, or more appropriately, to the contract that you created with the Treasurer back in 2016. So we have a situation where someone who, in our view, didn't have authority to negotiate a new contract, did negotiate a new contract for your employee, your appointee, if you will. We have discussed this matter with the President, the School Board, and have advised him, and we've advised the Treasurer, that in our view, although it came about in an odd way, he does have a contract that he has agreed to and that it'll be up to the School Board whether or not the School Board wants to hold him, the Treasurer, to the contract that's been negotiated. That said, that contract is different than the one that you made. There were some changes to compensation that were made. And our opinion also is that you can't take the good without the bad. Or, in other words, you take it the way it was negotiated and that you would be stuck with it and that the Treasurer would be stuck with it, in our view. We'll be the first to admit that there may be a difference of opinion on that issue. The Treasurer, or if the Treasurer decides to get his own counsel, may come up with a different view from us. But from our reading of House Bill 70... But from our reading of House Bill 70 and the existing law, the Treasurer works for the School Board. The School Board would then be in the position to either accept or reject a resignation if one is offered, but it would be a resignation or termination of a contract that was extended by the Treasurer's agreement with the CEO. So you'd have to affirmatively adopt, if you will, the extended contract that the Treasurer and the CEO entered into. And I think once you did that, then I think the Treasurer is, sorry, our opinion, the Treasurer is bound by it unless you then let him out of it.
Questions from the Board?
With that being said, let's look a little further down the road. Let's say that we do need a new Treasurer. Who gets to pick a Treasurer?
That goes right back to the same issue. Again, it's our view that it's the Board of Education's call, not the CEO's call, that the legislature, either by accident or on purpose, left that out of House Bill 70. If they're thinking, they would have left it out on purpose because otherwise you effectively would have the Chief Financial Officer answering to the person who's spending the money. That is not a good situation. There's no check or balance. Nowhere else in government does that exist. Mayor Kozier is here. When he goes to spend money, there's a Treasurer and an Auditor who are elected that he doesn't control who he has to answer to or get approval for expenditures. And that system of government exists everywhere in Ohio, including with School Boards.
After thinking about HB 70 and how it was created, I'm going to say they probably didn't put that much thought into it.
Okay.
Hard argue that, Mr. Sturgill?
I guess, I guess what I want, would really want to know is, to Josh, is it your desire to accept this job at Lindhurst?
I think I'm not sure. That may be an executive session conversation possibly. Because, yeah, I wouldn't want to put Josh on the spot to have to negotiate his employment.
Okay. I thought we were further along there.
Yeah. Is there any other?
Well, yes, I think, because we have to get to another point in which we engage to make this decision. But our first piece is, I don't know, since the emergency meeting, before we can make a motion, we've got to get a motion to walk something on the agenda. Correct? I don't know. So I'm referring to the adoption.
Well, as I understand it, the notice of the meeting for today included an announcement that the employment of the Treasurer would be at issue today. So adding something to the agenda would not be necessary if it's directed to that particular matter of employment. So I think as Tony's indicated, we have not had all the time in the world to consider these matters, but in the time that we have had, we have not yet had a chance to address the Board as a whole on the matters that we are generally speaking about today. We haven't had that chance. We've been asked by the President to investigate these circumstances and to come to some conclusions as to what your legal rights are and what your legal responsibilities are. But at the same time, the matter is on the agenda. If you wish to move forward to reaffirm and adopt the contract as it was negotiated on your behalf, as we say, for the Treasurer, that would be an appropriate matter, wouldn't need to amend the rules or anything of that nature, in my opinion.
Because the energy in the next part of our discussion, I think that action needs to be affirmed or not. So I would make a motion that we adopt the reference negotiated contract negotiated by the CEO and the Treasurer as...
As a suggestion, I would recommend that you mark it as an exhibit to the motion so there's no question about what it is that you're referring to and make it part of the motion for consideration by the Board.
So that'd be Exhibit A, our first exhibit.
Would it be Exhibit A and an Exhibit B because there's two agreements or just the new agreement?
The original terminated.
So we would be talking about these.
So as per that conversation, I would make a motion that we adopt Exhibit A, the newly-negotiated, the newest negotiated contract as our own.
Support. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Mazaria?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And then following that, through the Chair, and we could have more discussion about this as we get to the discussion, that we would instruct or authorize, or whatever it is, our legal counsel to begin, along with the Chair, that negotiated conversation with Mr. Hill. I don't think that's a public discussion piece, but I think someone, you know, to negotiate contractually where we go from here.
Through the Chair, whether now is the right time for that or some point in time in the future, I think is something the Board should consider. If you wish to talk about specifics as it regards your current Treasurer, I would recommend to you, consider doing that in executive session, as the law allows.
What's your pleasure, Board? Would you guys like to go enter into an executive session to have that discussion today or should we put it on the agenda for another meeting?
I think it would be today. The question is, do we have any more discussion of things that we need to cover before?
Through the President. I think the School Board has done everything it can do at this point by passing this motion to adopt the contract. Honestly, the next move is going to be the Treasurer's. If the Treasurer decides that he doesn't want to be bound by it, that would be his call. And then it would be an issue, I guess, for negotiation because that could potentially turn into some form of litigation, which I think we all hope would not happen. But, and I certainly don't want to put you on the spot, Josh, at this stage, I think that's something that he'll have to decide. I think once we hear from the Treasurer about what his thinking is with respect to the action you've taken today, if you'll authorize either Mr. Riley or myself to sit down and talk with him and/or his legal counsel, then we'll certainly do that.
Anything further on that topic? Yes, sir.
Do you want to consider a motion to authorize us to have discussions with Mr. Hill in the event those circumstances unfold?
Resolution or we just need a vote?
Just a motion.
Just a motion, please.
Aye.
You make the motion?
Yes.
Support?
Support.
Roll call?
Ms. Mazaria?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Having a report of recommendations from the CEO?
No.
Why does everybody get tickled when we talk about this? Everybody just smiles. We have a second hearing of the public, please.
I'd like to say a few things that I focus on. Number one, you're more worried about getting rid of Mr. Hardy than worry about agenda for getting these kids to learn something. That's all I hear about getting rid of Hardy. You got to understand something. In any organization that you work for or volunteer for, there's a pecking order. The Pope is the top man on earth for the Catholics. Mohammed is the top man for Allah, for Islam. Jesus is the top man for the Christians. It's a pecking order. That's why you got CEOs and Presidents of organizations. Now, Hardy is appointed by the state. How many more guys like Hardy appointed by the state? And you think you get rid of him and you may get another a-hole. So think about it. You got to find a way to work with him. What agenda he puts down for the curriculum for these kids to learn? Have you tried it? Because you don't like him. You know, what you need to do, and I'm going to say this, you need to have cross-functional teams. You get the parents, a group of them, from nine to 12, talk about the issues. You get the teachers from nine to 12 and talk about the issues. You take the time, if you don't have a job, come in the school with a badge on and says, I'm a member of Lorraine City Schools, like Mr. Cauter used to do, and go around the different classrooms and look at the kids if they're learning. Then have teachers that are like team leaders by subject or by grades and let them talk about the curriculum and what needs to be improved and tried. You can go to other schools in the same situation that Lorraine's in and see if they're D or F and what they're doing to upgrade their system. But just by sitting up here talking about Hardy, 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 you ain't accomplishing a damn thing, wasting people's time and wasting your own time. We had a CEO, Division Manager was in Brazil. This is a true story. He came to Cleveland and says, well, we're going to cut out this engine. And we said, why?
Mr. Wolffield, I appreciate, because I was a Ford guy myself. I love those stories because I've got a lot of those. But the first time I gave you five minutes, which is normally two, and I'm now giving you three, I would appreciate if maybe if you and I would get together and kind of, I would love to hear some of your suggestions. Just at the microphone, I'd appreciate allowing other people that are behind you ready to talk.
I'm going to get out of your way.
And I'd love to finish the conversation, but you and I can maybe could have a cup of coffee and get all these great suggestions down and see how we can implement some of those.
Did you write them down?
I would rather, we videotape, so we can see everything again, but I would love to have a conversation with you.
What you need to do, because Lorraine's dying for its education. And I'm going to say one more thing. You need to tell these kids, 2% of the total population of kids going to play in sports in the United States make it to the pros. And out of that 98%, how many graduate?
Okay. Thank you.
So you figure 90% of your kids, how many they graduate after getting done playing sports here?
Yes, sir.
Any other hearings from the public, please?
Hi, Miroda Lee, 1904 West 22nd Street, Lorraine. I have a question. You're saying that in order for this levy to remain on the ballot, it's contingent upon whether or not Mr. Hardy stays here or not? Okay. I have another question. For those of us, such as Bambi and a number of us who have worked all these years on levy committed to your bill, what do we do at this point in terms of trying to get it passed if we don't know and it's contingent upon it not being placed or removed from the ballot prior to election day?
I'm going to give you my best answer, Rota. Based on the people that I've talked to, and I met with Bambi on yesterday, I think we all have to put our full force ahead to try to get this levy passed because we need it. And we need for everybody who's on the committee to jump back. I think you already have a committee that's selected.
Yes.
And if you're inviting new people, invite them to, I don't know what your process is, but I'm willing to do everything I can to make this levy pass. And my assumption is that everybody who is going to do what they said they were going to do. So if you're asking, what do we do? I say go full steam ahead with your committee to try to get, raise money and let's get this passed.
I wanted to sit in there to hear it, but you, thank you.
That would be my suggestion, yes. And that's what I'm going to do.
So nothing has happened.
Full steam ahead, as if we're going to pass a levy for Lorraine City School District. Yes, ma'am.
The other thing I want to say to Josh, this community is proud and you've come and you've done a tremendous job in putting us back on track. We were in the red when you came. You put us in the light. We have had no findings for recovery in the State Auditor's Office. You have really done an excellent job there. And we're proud. But I can understand, you know, what is going on to you and being in another position. The other thing is I want to say, we're sitting around here now and we're talking. And I remember, you remember, when it first came about prior to House Bill 70 being placed, we said then, we did not follow through on it, that it's unconstitutional. And as our attorneys, and we still say, I still say, it's unconstitutional. That whole bill is, because it has caused so much chaos and has divided communities just like this one is divided. When they first came in to do the search for a CEO, where were all of you then? When we talked about it, did we not miss the ballot?
We did.
And we discussed it and we were highly upset about it, were we not?
We were.
And began to work. And I say, you know, you have a contingent upon this man who the state brought in, who under the law, who's always been telling us about the law, you're not, that's the law, you said that. His position and he's being here is something that was legally done and lawfully done. And I can see and I can understand perhaps some of the things. I was so upset at last board meeting, as you know, it brought me into tears when you have kids who go into school and who have attended and been in their classroom, and yet they're counted absent. Because where is your attendance office? Who is in charge of attendance? You all are so hung up on these technologies until we're not anymore looking at what happened to education state 50 years ago or go back. Let's begin to look at old school, new school and put it together. It can work.
Thank you.
But for our kids, and I understand, and thank you for saying that, to go full speed ahead, because we have children who really need that levy funding to be placing the resources in all of our buildings that these children need. As I said before, we have kids coming to school on a daily basis who are so traumatized that they're not being educated. So, you know, let's not put all the blame on them because some of us are blamed too for letting House Bill 70 come into existence. We did not mobilize or fight it to the fullest extent. So I really want to know, so if we can go ahead and get this levy passed, and like I said before, we want to say, Mr. Hardy, it's not about Mr. Hardy as much it is about what we've done and what's going on and how this is going to impact on our educational system here and our children.
Thank you.
That's what I want to say. But thank you for letting me know.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
If I could?
Please.
Because I keep hearing people say, this is not about Mr. Hardy.
Not to me.
To us, this is partially about Mr. Hardy. We would not be in a special meeting, emergency meeting, the 11th hour before the deadline to place a levy on. Wait a minute, I'm not going to finish. And as you know, I respect you greatly, but I think there were, there was testimony. You are either under the category of opponent of House Bill 70 or proponent of House Bill 70. And though you were against House Bill 70, you went to Columbus and testified as a proponent of House Bill 70. That is the record. So whether you, whatever you've expressed here, and I appreciate it, you went and testified as a proponent of House Bill 70. Now, I don't, that doesn't line up with your rhetoric on your views of House Bill 70.
I went there, House Bill 70, because it is the law. That is what I'm saying.
And I'm simply staying for the record.
The law. You know, and I understand. I did that and I would do it again. I am saying that is the law. Let's do it if we're going to do something, let's do it within the law. That's the way I was brought up.
And I'm just putting, I'm just placing on the record that you have stated that you are against House Bill 70.
Oh, yes.
And that you went to Columbus and testified on behalf of House Bill 70.
And I still say, House Bill 70 is unconstitutional. And there's a difference.
I just want to be clear. I wanted to make sure that there's clarity on that.
Between what's constitutional and law. Look at what your president's doing.
Thank you.
Because I told you too. And I said it too. I said, you got Caesar in the White House? Huh? Until the Russian. And give us car across the water. So where are we now?
I just wanted to say, it was pretty hard to mobilize against something that was passed and signed by the Governor in 12 hours.
That's right. Yes. No, but we talked about it before it was signed and before it came in. This was discussed. And if you recall, before it even became law, that it was constitutional, can we mobilize? Can we get some legal ramification about the constitutionality of that law? That is my own. That is my only. I went to Columbus to say, I saw no reason for the things that our kids were doing. I sat on the task force. There's a number of people who sat on the task force, saw some of the changes that came about in this school. I even have a great granddaughter who came in, who was in our program for special needs kids, who is Molly autistic, who came in and was non-verbal. That program helped her, and she is now saying words and speaking. Those are the things that I'm about.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public, please?
I just want to ask, if this levy is passed, where is this money going to be going? The kids don't have no extra curriculum. We have no tutoring in the school anymore. I mean, it's just money being spent. We don't know where the money is going. Lorraine schools should have never been in this bad shape with money that we have to put a levy on a ballot like this. I mean, you hiring two and three and four administrators every year, paying them over $100,000 a year, and then they getting all the benefits? That's not right. They should have been hiring more teachers. The schools is overcrowded with kids. We should have had more teachers hired instead of all these administrators walking around, interrupting class, and the kids saying they stupid. So explain to me what this tax levy going to do? For more money to be spent out here, we don't know where it's going? I just want somebody to explain this to me. My kids, my grandkids don't even have tutoring. Some of the teachers have to volunteer to try to help them with their homework because they don't understand. The school was never like that. We always had someone to help those kids that were struggling in school. We don't have none of that anymore. And the public is not going to go along with this tax increase, because I've heard a lot of people say that. They're not going to vote for this levy. What for, for more money to be spent out here, we don't know where it's going?
Sure. So this is a renewal, so that money is already kind of in the system, but I do respect what you're saying, because I've heard a lot of the people say that they're not interested in passing a levy under these conditions.
Yes.
And we're going, and hopefully we can change those conditions.
And put some tutors in school and add some more teachers. There's kids that's struggling and they don't understand a lot of their homework. We used to have tutors in school where they helped the kids, the teachers did. Some of them volunteered just to help these kids, but then still they get a bad rap.
Amen.
And it's not fair, because it's not fair to them at all. That's all I got to say. I'm just, I'm getting upset.
You did well. You did well.
It would be great to put Title I back where Title I belongs.
I'd like to respond to that. We did not, as a board, we have no power. That's what I'm saying. So when you come to us, our heart is broken also, because we don't have the power to do any of that. We can listen to you and nothing happens, because we don't have any power. When they had the CEO hired, they took all the, all of the power away from us.
All the curriculum, everything away from the kids.
And we have invited him, as you can see, he's in our minutes every time. He's in our minutes and he never chooses to come. That is not us. That is our CEO that does not come here to work with us. The state has structured it where he can come and he can work with the assessment committees, but he doesn't have to work with us. So he does that, and he does that well with them, but he doesn't do it with us. And what he has done is he's gone to the community and he has had community meetings in to let you know what he's doing. But the hiring of the multiple administrators, that was up to him.
Which is working right. We need more teachers.
And that, and we had no way to control that.
I know.
Thank you.
That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. Bill, were you saying something? I'm sorry.
I was saying that we're, I think we're all looking for the same thing, and it's called accountability.
Yes.
And before, when someone come and asked us, we had to be accountable. It's hard to come to someone that won't answer you and shows no, shows no accountability. I've sat here, and Josh knows every year I'm going to ask him the same question. He knows every July that Bill Sturgill's going to ask him what the carryover is. The last year he told me the carryover was 20.9 million. This year he told me the carryover was 2.9 million. So if I got my math correct, there's $18 million that was spent on top of the 120-some-million budget that Lorraine has, and it just makes you wonder, what did you get for it? What is your curriculum? And I'm sitting here hearing about $100,000 curriculum for kindergarten through second grade that isn't even aligned with the state from a man who came in and said, "Well, only 17% of Lorraine's curriculum was aligned with the state standards." And you buy something and it's not even on the state education. I just don't understand it. I don't understand how our state superintendent can even be part of that. And it's just beyond me, and that's why I say, everything comes back to accountability, and that's what we need back.
Want to hear from our treasurer?
Yeah, for clarification, it wasn't 20 million carryover. The number was 20 million carryover last year.
20.9, right.
20.9. The differential from what my forecast projected versus how we ended was 2.9 million better than what it was. We, the carryover this year, I believe, is, I'll pull it up real quick here, but it's still in that we didn't, we didn't exceed spending. We were better by 2.9 million than what I projected. So the cash balance at the end of the year is almost 22 million. The differential from what my forecast projected to how we finished was 2.9 million better.
So your differential last year was 20.9 million better?
No, our differential last year, I believe, was 3.8 million better than what I projected, but the carryover, like the cash balance at the end of the year last year was 20.9. So I think that's, it's, just for clarity, that's the two different, the two different numbers.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
We didn't excess, we didn't exceed revenue over expenditure this year. We were better.
If we're doing, if we're doing that well, then why are we going into fiscal watch in October?
Because of what's built into the forecast is removing those renewals, and then we also keep in mind, a year and a half from now, we have to start looking at those three current expense levies, which are also removed from the forecast. And...
You're talking about the operating levies?
Yeah, the three current expense operating levies. Those are factored in there, so those are going to be removed. The other piece of it is, keep in mind, this is a forecast, and I always flatline revenue for the five years, not assuming any increase, because, let's be honest, for revenue purposes, you can't really estimate beyond two years anyways, the current biennial budget. So there's that piece, and then I always build in increases for expenditures. So those expenditures are always growing. That doesn't mean that I'm not doing within the best of my power, of course, to try and mitigate growth or increases in those areas.
I know Rota Lee sat here and she talked about how we was in the red, but we was actually in the black when you got here.
Yeah.
Because, because on 2012, we got the, we got the new, the new emergency levy with $3.1 million. And then in the next nine months after that, the biennial budget, we got close to $7 million there. So that was, that was close to a $10 million turnaround.
Yeah.
So we were, we were actually, we were actually sitting pretty good, right?
We were, but this was always kind of, even with Dale's forecast, this was always kind of the year that we would start seeing it. And especially, what is also making it probably worse off is the fact that the current biennial budget that was just passed has no per student amount increase, and we are a school that is very dependent on that per student amount increase.
I mean, I could get to the bottom of this and just tell you what really, what really irks me. And what really irks me was the level of management that was put in our school system that we clearly knew that we couldn't afford, but somehow Mr. Hardy can, okay? That he can, can afford that. Now, if we didn't put a level of management in there, then that would push that, that would push that, that point in 2022, that would push it out a lot farther, wouldn't it?
Of course.
Okay, because...
Your personal service costs is...
Yeah, when we give, when we give somebody an $80,000 job, it's not an $80,000 job. It's probably a $110,000 job, because 30%, 30% of that is going into benefits. So, I mean, we, we could sit here and talk numbers, but I know this. I know we were sitting pretty good. And if I had one do-over in my lifetime, I would be looking more at the academics than I was, and I would go into fiscal emergency. I would, I would, I would let the state have the fiscal emergency thing. And, you know, if somebody hadn't told me two years after we were into this that we were in it, and we were so busy worried about the finance that we didn't, I don't think we seen the academic part, because I think, I think the finance was much easier to solve than the academic part, but that's, okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
The carryover is trending as to last year. That's basically what you were clearing up with in the same, okay? So that's news.
I think we, we maybe carried a little bit over extra than we did last year, so that's why we saw that cash balance increase slightly.
That's great news, and that's actually just another point as to why you are vital to the levy getting on and passing. Like, if you're not here, you know, regardless of other people are here, I don't know that I have confidence. I don't know who's going to be your replacement, who's going to choose your replacement. I mean, that's just another concern that came up in the last week on top of years, you know, of the concerns that we've had this past year and prior. Just to kind of reiterate, and just so the public is aware, the CEO was invited to every meeting. That's kind of why we chuckle every time you say the recommendations of the CEO, there are none, because there never are none, or any, I guess, double negative, but people, parents have urged him, people probably urged him privately, publicly, at the grocery store visits or line dancing that I don't think he ever held, where he said he was going to hold those things for family engagement back in January. I don't know, I never seen a post about line dancing or grocery store visits, but I'm sure if he had held those, people may have said, "Hey, why don't you talk to the board? We have a levy coming up," just as I did, as other people have done. So in a way, when it's like one-sided, you only can extend yourself so many times to say, "Hey, meet with us, meet with us," before you start getting frustrated, getting in despair, you know? Like, what else are you going to do? Your hands are tied. Also, like, I don't know, he's omnipotent, so he has all this power, and maybe he feels like he doesn't have to answer to anybody, but we still feel like just a show of, you know, humanity to say, "You're going through a lot of issues, let's work on them together." That's all we were asking.
Thank you.
You know, that had been extended, like, a lot of this may have been avoided, so regardless of the law being unconstitutional, or whether you agree with it or not, or whether you're a proponent of the law itself, or the bill itself, or the man himself, or whatever it is, who's the proponent for the children? And when you stand up and say you're one of the proponents of the children, or I'm advocating for the children, you know, we've gotten a lot of heat for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Barbie Washington, back again. Report cards, we asked, we've been asking all year, we asked again at the ADC meeting. There was a follow-up email from, first it was Randy and Sampson, and then Mr. Hardy. He sort of likes to talk down to people quite often. I have, have the email, if you'd like to see it. He offered to put a legend or a table or something in the report cards, thinking that we didn't know how to read our children's report cards, but they are still incorrect through the chair to Ms. Leander. You were commented on that email. I would like to state that ninth through 12th grade parents still have not received a final report card.
If I looked at that report card, and if you look at the headings on the columns, it doesn't show clearly what the final grades were. If you have a semester class, which on that particular report card displayed CCP courses, there should be a column that shows the final grade, and that report card did not do so. And in my correspondence to Mr. Hardy recently, I also addressed the report card issue with him, so I'm looking forward to getting a response back. I ask for a viable and permanent solution to this concern that has been ongoing for the entire school year.
Thank you. Also, that was not my child's report card. Again, I'm really concerned, especially we still don't know who's running our public records request. I don't understand why they would have put somebody else's child's report card on that correspondence when I'm the one that sent the initial email. They could have put my child's report card on there. We're just sharing kids' information, but we have to protect the raw data from the state test scores. Like, this isn't really adding up.
Bambi Dillon, 228 Delaware Avenue. Josh, I know it has to be your decision, and you have to do the best thing for you and your family. I just want you to know how important you are to me. You've helped me with the levy committees, and you will be a big loss for this levy committee, because you were a great leader for us, and I would like to know if I could get a chair in ball and put you on that chair, because really, we are going to be lost without a treasurer. And plus, in the past, our administration was always a great help to us with the levy committee, and I think with you gone, we're sunk, really, because who do we turn to? The people that are there are not familiar with our community. They, you know, they can't give anybody numbers. How are they going to give us numbers to be able to promote on a pamphlet to send out to the community to try to push for the levy? I've sat here, meeting after meeting, no one can really tell you how many teachers are here, nobody can tell you how many kids are here, nobody knows how many kids we lost. That affects the budget. You know, so it's just like mass chaos, and I don't care who's in charge. I don't care who's the person's name is. It's always the top person that gets the blame, because it starts with the top. I've been, worked for a corporation, and that's where it was always. And you know what happened to my CEO? When he flunked, he's gone. They don't mess around when you're using other people's money. So that being said, I hope that the ADC doesn't wait around too long in the state so we can move forward. We need to start moving forward, because as long as it takes, we're going to keep going backwards, and we're going to keep going backwards. That's why, really, I wish you'd stay.
That's a long way to get there, but you got there.
I know. And I guess you want me to start plugging the levy committee?
Yes, please. Anyway, I can be of help, please let me know. Seeing no further? Anything else from the public? So our next meeting?
It's the 12th.
It's already the 12th?
15th, August 13th.
August 13th, 5 o'clock here?
Yes.
If there's nothing further, anything further from the ADC? You guys are good? Nothing further? I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Support.
Roll call.
Ms. Mazaria?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes. Thank you all for coming.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools, TV20 WLCS.